Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody, members of the public, those listening online, to the commission meeting on this 19th day of May, 2020. It's approximately 10:00 a.m. I'm Commissioner Gage Farrar. I'll be chairing the meeting. To my right, Commissioner Jim Harvey, and to my left, Commissioner Scott Jenkins. We welcome you here. And we will start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance from Steve Burton. I see Steve there. He has his mask on. And then invocation by Chris Crockett, our attorney. Thought of the day, Commissioner Jenkins. We'll go to that point. Thank you. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind Father in heaven, we bow our heads before thee at the start of this commission meeting to offer up our gratitude unto thee for all the many blessings that we have to be citizens of this great nation and this great county. Father, as we begin this commission meeting, we ask that thy Spirit will be with us, that thou will guide us in the decisions that are about to be made, that we may be able to look out for the best interest of those we serve here in Weber County. Please continue to protect us during these very trying times, that we may, please help us navigate to brighter days. We love thee so very much, dear heavenly Father, and we ask for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you. Well, we want to yellow this last week, and that's a pretty big deal. But beyond that, there's a constitutional argument that's coming down, and it's really interesting. If anybody's paying attention to what's happening, and you should be paying attention, because this is really important, what's taking place right now in our lives. One is our constitutional right to the press and do assemble. You know, the Fourth Amendment. Those are big deals. Your constitutional right to assemble and for government to stop you from doing business should not be allowed. But on the other hand, the Constitution talks in there about government taking care of us and our health and our welfare. And so you have a little bit of a fight going on right now that the Constitution didn't, was unable to see when it was written. But it's important that we understand as citizens when government has a right to do things and when government does not have a right to do things. And it's important that we don't cross those lines whenever possible. And the reason I say that is because this is the old nose in the tent, the camel's nose in the tent, you know? Starts out with your nose in there, before you notice, the whole camel's in there. Well, it's the same thing here. Government starts out doing certain things, and next thing you know, government wants to... And, you know, being in government, I think we can all understand that. None of this seems to be done out of ill thought or ill will, but all of it seems to come out with the idea that people want to give government more power. And, boy, that's the last thing you want to do, is give government more power, because when government takes more power, a lot of times it gets out of control. And me and Gage have seen that, being in legislature, and, boy, you just have to be careful. Sometimes government isn't the answer to everything, and people have to have, they have to be able to fall down on their own accord and get themselves back up. And government can't do everything. And the big challenge we have is where does government stop and where do our rights begin? And it's hard. It's hard to understand what to do here, but we can't lose track of that. It's very, very important. So please, pay attention to what's happening in our lives right now, today. There's a constitutional crisis, a little bit of one. It's not rose to a big deal yet, but, you know, if you go to other states and you watch the news, in other states, they're having mass gatherings on their Capitol grounds right now, where they're fighting these things, because they've had it. They're done being shut in. So it's important that we understand what's happening right now. And I, you know, I tip my hat to the governor and to our county. We've done really good things, and it's time to loosen it up even more. We're doing a good job, and we've just got to keep doing a good job. We can't stop. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Excellent point. I agree. You know, individual liberties have to still rule the day. And if we look at other states, for example, California, we see that that's, in my opinion, gone too far. And the state of Utah, Weber County, I think, has held the line, but at the same time, it's time to loosen up a little bit. I agree. Okay. Thank you for that comment. We now go to public comments. Anybody that would like to speak to the commission, please come up.
See, you're looking at me first. You know I'll come.
You're first and foremost in our hearts here, Ralph, so welcome. Go ahead.
Buttering me up for something there, so.
Okay. You can use that mic.
Yep. Will do. First of all, I just want to thank you for your thought of the day, because that is true, and we need to be cautious of that. And, yeah, that is true. We need to open up even more. We've got to save our economy. First of all, I just want to thank you guys. The city council is following route to you today. I'm going over to pick it up now. Mayor's office called me, but it was you guys that started the ball rolling. And I know it was you two, and Harvey just tagging along, but I just want you to thank you guys, that we've had such a response, that we started out with seven, three different entities here in Weber County that we'd be talking with, had them call me and call the program, so that we have 157 now that we'll be taking and going and looking forward to make. This is Bright Eyes. This is JoJo. Say hi, JoJo.
Hi.
Welcome.
So you can be quiet now. But we just want you to know that we're very appreciative of your efforts and that you guys started out. We're having a problem with Davis County being able to understand what it is. You start at the top, so that we can show them what needs to be done. So we started in Weber County. You guys started right here. We're asking them to do the same. There's so much fraud that's going on in this COVID-19 times, that you have to justify any type of things that you're trying to seek to have things done. I want you to know that also, too, I brought a couple of people here today, because we had numerous people that wanted to come and be able to express their thanks to you and also give you a little bit of just heads up on what's going on with just the opportunities that you presented here for us. One of the things I want to ask the council to be careful with, I mean, the commission to be careful and kind of address, too, as you pass down to the different programs and this that we have going, that we need to put our awareness up of the individuals that have diverse situations, homelessness and this, as they're coming together and they're getting $1,200 into their pocket, that's a really big sum to them. There's a lot of them that are going to want to go out and just spend that frivolously. They need to go ahead and put some of that aside, because they don't have 501Ks. They do not have 401s. They don't have any one thing like that to depend on. They have their circumstance that they were dealing with today, brought them to our program and others that are in the county, and they need to spend that money and put some away responsibly. So whatever effort we can do to pass on to these programs to make their clientele aware that this money is not just free money, it's not something that's going to happen all the time, that they need to be very, very judicial with it, and just know that the next stimulus that they're talking about, it's not even promised. And, well, they need to be responsible with this right here. Again, I just want to say thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. You want to introduce the young folks you got behind you there, Ralph? Are they with you?
Well, I'll tell you what, they can do it themselves.
Stand up, yeah.
A little bit demanding, so, you know, the...
What do you mean, a little bit?
Stand up, be the people they are.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Julian Hankins. I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to be able to come to you guys and talk to you about a situation at the Lantern House and everything like that, and also express some of the opinions and everything we have. I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to be able to, well, with the Lantern House and the problems that we're going through, we're at least very thankful that we have a place to lay our head, shower, place still where we don't have to just sleep in our car. We can save money for, even with this whole COVID thing right now, it's still a good place for us to be able to just get ourselves together during the time and, you know, not have to worry too much on bills, you know, and rent and stuff like that, but it really helps us out. And I'm just really grateful for that as well, and that you guys have been able to, you know, come together and help, you know, stuff like that and get the, I guess, you know, for us to give everything that is going on, our problems, our situations, things to make better and stuff like that, and I really thank you for that.
Thank you. Can you give us your name again?
My name's Julian Hankins.
Thank you very much.
I'm Lakeisha Hankins, and I just wanted to thank you, because as a mother at Lantern House, it gives me a peace of mind to know that I don't have to worry about where my child's going to lay his head, as well as all the other families there. And I just want to thank you guys for backing up Lantern House as well, and just let you know that that program is great. We started out with Agape Outreach, and now we were able to go into Lantern and Lantern House and get the program, and it helps us out a lot. And we just thank you guys for backing them up and really supporting them right now, and especially with these times in COVID-19. I know it set a lot of things back, but it's a big, big, big help. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Best of luck to you folks. Wish you the best. Anybody else like to come? Good to see you.
Good to be here again. Sylvia Salisbury in Ogden. I just had some thoughts going around in my mind since Commissioner Jenkins mentioned what he did. You know, we're guaranteed life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness or property. We're not guaranteed safety. We're not guaranteed health. And I think when the government tries to give us that, we can't have safety and liberty both. We've got to choose one or the other. And I think that this has gone too far. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Sylvia. I think we would agree with that thought of the day. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Great public comments this morning, so we appreciate that very much.
You know, I'd like to comment here.
Head quick. I appreciate both those comments. You folks from coming down, let us know that Lantern House is doing good things. We really appreciate that. You know, Lantern House is under a lot of pressure right now, and they're busting at the seams, and that just makes me really feel good that you guys would spend your time to come down here and compliment that I was on that. I just thank you, thank you for that. Sylvia, I appreciate your comments very much. So thank you. Appreciate you guys doing that today.
Thank you.
What about me?
Oh, you too, Ralph. I'm sorry. I really appreciate your little friend you brought with you.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought your companion there with you, Ralph. That's great.
That's right.
Anything else? Commissioner Harvey?
No. No, it's wonderful. Great.
And again, yeah, for you folks from Lantern House, it's great to hear. I actually serve on that board, and a lot of times, as board members, we don't understand. I see a lot of people down there. I've served lunch, I've served dinner to people that come in, but sometimes we don't get the personal thanks or relationships with those people. So it's great to have you folks come in and share that experience, and I'll make sure I pass that on at our next board meeting. And thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, let's move on to our agenda. Let's go to the consent items under F, and I'm going to go through these. So consent item one would be request for approval of warrants 2732 through 2765 and 449479 through 449636 in the amount of $1,918,161.50. Two, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $82,389.62. Three, requests for approval of minutes for the meeting held on May 12, 2020. Four, requests for approval of new business licenses. Five, requests from the Weber-Morgan Health Department for approval to surplus a 2005 Ford Escape. Six, requests from the Ogden-Echols Conference Center for approval to surplus catering supplies. And seven, requests from Weber County Property Management for approval to surplus office equipment and furniture. That's the consent items. Commissioners, questions?
You know, I have a comment here, Mr. Chair. If you look at our bills this month, you'll notice some bills are starting to come through regularly that we've just committed to. One of them was this Vital Core Health Strategies at the sheriff's office. They're on there now. You see them. And, you know, $272,000, that's not cheap. That's an expensive contract for the county. So we're watching it really close to see where that takes us, and we all have high hopes for it. When we agree to this contract, we expect a lot out of these folks, and so this is not an easy thing. The other thing is Commissioner Harvey and I yesterday had a chance to go to the visit Ogden board meeting, and they thanked us for doing the best we could to hold their contract with the county as whole as possible. Now, we did cut them a little. Well, $200,000, yes, it wasn't just a little, but we give them consistency through the end of the year, and they're really happy with that, to know where we are and what they're going to get and what they can plan on, so they know how to plan getting their, they're going to start bringing their people back to work. So that was a big deal that we've done there. Ah, there was one other item here that I wanted to talk about. Well, so our transfer station. You know, I wanted to report, I got a call from John Watson last Friday, and he said that they were having trouble keeping the landfill open on Saturday. And, you know...
Landfill or transfer station?
Landfill.
Oh, wow.
Landfill. And, you know, we're hauling all the way to Twilla, and we're trying to keep that doggone thing clean every night. Well, we've been overrun with material lately. I mean overrun. Everybody's home, and they're cleaning their yards, and we have got so much garbage and junk out there. And then they were, they'll only stay open for a certain amount of time. When John called me, he said, "I think we've got 18 loads of garbage on the floor in here." And it's like, are you kidding me? And when he says 18 loads, he's talking about 18 double trailers, 80,000 pounds. That'd be...
18 times 80.
Yeah, that'd be over a million pounds of garbage.
Lot of, yeah, lot of garbage.
Well, you know, we had that thing burned down a few years ago, and the fire marshals, they're death on it. You can't leave garbage on the floor overnight. And so anyway, I called, I happen to know somebody who works for Republic, and I called him, and he got hold of those guys down there, and they called out there, and they said, "You will be open this Saturday." And that MBI that hauls garbage for us hauled 21 truckloads Saturday out there. 21 truckloads. That's hard to believe. That is so much garbage. And we got it out, and it's all cleaned up, and John says Saturday night, the floor was clean. So that just makes me happy as heck.
That's great.
That we could call them, they'd respond like that, and that that would take place. So, you know, right now, I know we talked this morning, we're having this curbside in the Upper Valley and in the U.N. Highlands, worked pretty good, and we're struggling a little bit out west, but we're getting on top of it. And I feel like things are actually going really darn good, considering how many people we brought on and what we did, and the fact that we're, what we did was just like bringing on three cities, because they're three separate areas. And so that was not an easy task. And Sean and his group have done a really good job, and John, and you've all worked very well. So not only is the spring bringing more garbage, but the fact we're collecting and bringing it in, several more trucks a week. We just, our garbage is at an all-time high right now. But, and John's feeling it. He's feeling it. He is really taxed, but he's done a great job out there. And our transfer station's doing really good, and it'll slow down here a little bit in another month, but, boy, for right now, they're going balls to the wall, all they can do.
Yeah. Oh, great, great comments. I actually had a couple of comments directed to me over the weekend about how well the transfer station was running and the experiences that the residents had out there, and...
Thanks to Sean and John and that group.
And, you know, with the volume that we have out there, you'd think that services would be hindered a little bit or decreased. I think that they're maintaining or actually increasing their services from what I've heard from the public.
You know, we're grateful to have the inmates back. You know, they employ, I don't know the exact amount, isn't it about 12? Sean, do you remember?
It varies.
Does it?
Yeah.
Do they need them?
We get up to that high. Usually it's probably six to eight.
Okay. Well, anyway, they do a good job out there, and they direct traffic and put them at different stations, but that's what gives that place order.
Does.
Yeah.
And it's great for the inmates as well.
Yeah, it is.
Great service.
Well, you know, one of the things, I think, Sean, you may need to correct me, but, you know, three and a half years ago, I think, while you're talking about the transfer station... We were losing how much a year, Sean? $300,000?
Yeah.
$300,000 a year the county was losing. It was going into our fund balance. In fact, we got into a negative fund balance where we had to loan ourselves money out of the general fund to take care of all the cities and municipalities. And now, because of what's happening, I don't think people really appreciate, this is an essential service, just as water, sewer, garbage, it's an essential service that we're not statutorily obligated to perform. We do this as a county to help the cities and a little bit to help ourselves with what few we have and unincorporated. But we're now running a profit. The deficit has been not quite cleaned up that we ran for years and years before that. You know, while we were losing $300,000 a year, we lost, I think it was $2.5 million. And now that's being cleaned up, so not only have we righted the wrong, we're in a good way, we're paying off that deficit. Our garbage on Saturday used to be, I think, between eight and 12 truckloads on a Saturday, and now it's 20, what did you say, 20?
It was 21 truckloads Saturday. Of course, we were catching up, but still, that is unbelievable.
Yeah, so, you know, our population hasn't increased by double, certainly. But I commend what we've, we've just been a little more efficient. We've watched every little piece, and, you know, when we see these contracts come in, Ricky, like you presented for the copy machines, where, oh, it saves us $6,000 or $7,000 a month. And in a big, you know, when a big corporation like Weber County Corporation, you think, well, that's not very much. Well, we're looking, we're really not chasing the pennies. We're not going after the dollars. We look at every little thing, like this, like this sheriff's contract you commented on, Commissioner, and the services, of course, that's being funded by the cost savings from the employees that, there. So we're doing, we're doing things a little more efficiently now, and that's why we have those contracts, is just ways to save those little bits and pieces so that we're more efficient. I'm really glad, this is a, there's a lot of great, there's a good feeling here in the county. There's a good feeling in the employees. You can tell in their, in their, their quality of their work and their pride of what they're doing, and it's coming out where it's benefiting now all the people who pay taxes. We're running at a, this county corporation is running more efficiently. I sure appreciate your two working with you and us being able to make good, hard decisions, but it's positively impacting where we live. So thank you.
One more comment?
Thank you, please.
Well, he's brought several things up now. You know, when you go down through the bills here, and, well, we do this for the public to try to make sure we spend everything appropriately, and you look at the big ones, because they're the ones that stand out, and I see here Weber Human Services. People say, "Well, what happens there?" Well, there's 193... Well, in fact, I'm starting to steal Ricky's thunder here a little bit. Maybe we ought to go to him. I'm sorry.
Ricky can go through them. Go ahead.
Well, and then you look at Republic Services, the garbage we've been talking about. There's a bill here for half a million dollars, and that's a lot of garbage. And then you say, "Well, that's a monthly bill." And I've seen that bill before, $600,000. So we haul a lot of garbage out of here, and we pay a lot to have that done. And, but it's unified, and to what Commissioner Harvey says, it keeps it clean, it keeps it organized, and it flows well. And when you talk about supply chain, this is the tail end of the supply chain, and it's really supply to the landfill, but it takes a ton to coordinate this stuff. And you can see if we have a hiccup, just like that, we get overloaded, and it, you have to stay on top of this stuff. And if you don't, you can run into problems quick. And so it's really interesting to watch how this stuff happens. And I appreciate Republic for responding to our request. I hesitate to say anything there, because as far as transparency, my son's one of the ones involved in that, and so I hesitate to say too much there, but in this case, they did a great job.
Yeah, that's good. And let me just make a comment. You brought up the health care at the jail facility at the sheriff's office, and there was, again, a lot of discussion before that contract was signed. You brought up the point that that, we are looking at that on a monthly basis, which we are, and it is an expensive contract, but we also had heavy expense out there prior to this contract, and we had substantial liability from the commission's perspective in terms of potential lawsuits that a lot of other cities and counties across this country were getting into. So our decision was not just based on the dollars and cents, even though this was a somewhat of an increase, but the protection of liability for future lawsuits that's taking place across this country, that could have been into the millions of dollars, that could have very much impacted our bottom line. So we felt that this was a safe decision moving forward, as well as providing better services for those people at the jail facility. So just so we want to make sure that's clarified. With that, Ricky, do you want to review our consent items before we take a motion?
You bet. We issued eight purchase orders this week for $82,000. Half of that amount, or $41,000, is for the Golden Spike Event Center, and that will purchase hog panels for the junior livestock program. 23% or $19,000 is for HR, and that will go towards an assessment of the payroll and HR system. 12% or $10,000 is for the elections office, and that will purchase label printers, which will be used for emergency drive-by voting on Election Day in June. As far as checks, we issued 192 checks for $1.9 million. As was mentioned, 27% of that amount, or $515,000, was for the transfer station. That was almost exclusively disposal fees, but they also had some equipment maintenance and some costs for emergency staffing to handle the increased tonnage there. 17% or $332,000 is for the jail. The bulk of that, again, was the nursing services contract with Vital Core, but we also provided inmate counseling, as well as some culinary costs in there. We had two items that were 10%, or just about $200,000. One was our paramedic services, and the other's the monthly contribution to Weber Human Services. We had 7% or $130,000 that was the ramp awards, and those were all easy grants to various municipalities and organizations throughout the county. And then lastly, 5% or $105,000 was spent on public defender services this week.
Thank you. Comments, commissioners? Or I'd be open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion, but we approve those consent items as presented.
Thank you.
And I will second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent, agenda items have been approved. Thank you. Let's go to action items. Action item G1, request for approval of an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and Ogden City, clarifying responsibilities between Ogden City and Weber County for the NRCS bank stabilization projects on the Ogden and Weber rivers. Mr. Peterson, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for considering this agreement between Weber County and Ogden. As you know, this past year, we received a grant from the NRCS... Weber County and Ogden. As you know, this past year, we received a grant from the NRCS to repair five sections on the Ogden and Weber River, four on the Ogden, one on the Weber River.
Lance, what does NRCS stand for?
Natural Conservation Resource Service. It's part of the Federal Department of Agriculture. They, they do a lot of grants to help stabilize our, our, our water basins and, and rivers. So four of these were in Ogden, one was in West Haven. And both the cities agreed to come up with a 20% match for this grant. Ogden City has agreed to oversee the, the construction management. And this just kind of outlines that they'll do that, excuse me, that they'll submit reimbursement requests to us, and that we'll submit those requests on up to the, the NRCS. NRCS only makes agreements with counties. So we're kind of the middleman in there to help them facilitate this. This will just involve myself and maybe Scott Park and John Bond a little bit to, to pay these bills for them and get them reimbursed.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So when I went through this, Lance, I, it doesn't really give you anything as far as the scope of the project. Can you tell me, you said five areas?
Yes.
Tell a little bit about that.
You bet. The, the scope is actually outlined in the, in the damage assessment and the NOA, the Notice of Award, that I think has gone through here before. And all the pictures and specific sites are on that. And the scope is, over here by Monroe, there was a 90-degree turn behind some homes that, that eroded. There's also a lot of debris that's built up there that needs to be cleared out to, to help the Ogden River make a better flow through there. And then about three years ago, we made a repair over on, by the 21st Street.
Right. I remember that.
And, and that one got damaged a little bit a year or so ago when we had the high runoff. And so we just need to raise it up a little bit and reconfigure that just a little bit. There's a, another divot that occurred right there on the north side of the 21st Pond, maybe about 30, 40 feet long, but it's, it's huge. And then there's about 100 feet to the west, there was another repair that got overtopped a little bit. The fifth one is on the west side of 1900, just before the river, right where the river turns to go north underneath Westwell Street. And that's, no, wait, excuse me. It's, yeah, yeah, it's on a curve there. So there's actually two over there, but they only approved one. So it's right along the parkway, right along the parkway.
Most people don't understand river management and how hard that is. You go down there in the middle of the fall or the winter, and there's almost no water in there. And you think, well, this is no big deal. And then you go down there right now, when we've got some major runoff starting, and it's chock full, and you can see the bank starting to erode. And it's like, wow, this thing puts a lot of water through here.
Yes, it does. It conveys a lot. 3,000, 3,500 CFS on the lower river there. And yeah, it's, it's really almost a full-time job if we had a, you know, take a long stick backhoe to go and keep the sandbars cleaned out and the gravel bars cleaned out and, and repair wherever the, the bank has, has eroded. So it, between that and all of our drainages, stormwater is, in the past 21, 22 years I've been here, it's, it's one of the major, major challenges we face in this county when it comes to hazards, is storm runoff.
Well, one more?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to take up a little time here. But while we're doing that, and it's optimal here right now, because you're standing at the podium, it looks like the runoff this year, we're into that season. And I sit on that, that we were basin water conservancy. And we was going through the numbers the other day. And it looks like most of our dams will fill. And, you know, it's always how it comes down, right? It's not so much how you have. And we're having a little bit of a cool spell right now. And of course, that really helps us, because it prolongs the runoff period. And it makes it so it's not quite as much, and stretches it out a little more, and helps take a lot of the damage out that Lance was talking about, that we have to deal with yearly. And so, so far, let me find a little wood there.
Yeah, don't jinx it.
I was gonna say, it started out to be a pretty good runoff.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're not looking at much of a runoff this year at all. Maybe 200, 300 CFS coming down the Ogden for a while. And then later on in, in the June, some coming down the Weber. But we're gonna be far below our, our peaks.
I agree. Looking at my river, it's dropped substantially just in the last two weeks. But the good news is, it appears that Pine View Reservoir is getting near capacity or close to it, just by my observation.
Yeah, 75% of Pine View's capacity is in the top 25 elevation of that reservoir. So it's, it's getting there, and it looks like it should fill up. And the thing you don't want to do is fill and spill during the high runoff. You want it to spill after.
Yeah. Well, we won't have to look at the floodrock this year, Commissioners.
That's right.
Isn't that true, Commissioner?
I looked, the last couple of nights or last few days, I've looked at it. And it's, you know, pretty much all above the water level. So.
Yep.
And compare that to last year, substantially different. So. Anything else, Lance?
No, 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 not on the NRCS grant.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Peterson? If not, I'd entertain a motion for action item G1.
I'd make that motion that we accept this as presented to us.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thanks. You have an interlocal agreement.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Looks like you're still up. So, item two, Request for Approval of Interlocal Agreement Buy-In Between Weber County and Salt Lake County for Acquisition and Dispensing of Medical Supplies. Back to you, Lance.
When Congress passed the CARES Act, part of that was to provide money to the locals for, for medical supplies. The state and Salt Lake County received, I guess in partnership, some CARES money. And Salt Lake County bought quite a few infrared thermal thermometers. And so this is a little agreement saying that they're providing them to us for free, hold them harmless, and, and thank you very much. Slam-bam, thank you, ma'am. Kind of a little agreement there.
Okay. Any questions?
Remember when Jenny Wilson called us?
Yeah, I do remember that.
The only, you know, when you look at these kind of things, you say, well, why are they doing this for us? And why, you know, but?
Yeah. It was federal money that came down to them and in partnership agreement with the state. So.
You don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth.
Yeah.
Oh, here, you take it and just let it go.
Exactly.
And I'm grateful to have it.
Yes.
They sent it back, and we wouldn't have. It's nice. It's a very nice gesture.
That's good. Yeah, I think they bought like 4,000 or 5,000 of them. I don't know where they got them from, but.
And Mayor Wilson and Commissioner Harvey are very tight. That's a good thing we have that connection.
Yeah, that is good.
Good. Partnerships are great.
Yeah, partnerships. And those relationships mean everything.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
No, I, boy, if you're ready to accept a motion, Mr. Chair.
I am. I'm ready.
I'd like to approve that interlocal agreement between Weber County and Salt Lake County.
That's great. And we have a motion.
And based on that motion, I will capitulate and agree to, to second it.
And we have a second. And Ling, I would add to that. Let's make sure that you contact Mayor Wilson. Let her know that we very much appreciate her kindness and outreach. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, let's move on. Agenda item three, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-In Between Weber County and Barnett Intermountain Water Consulting for Consulting Services Related to Various Water Rights and Other Related Issues. Mr. Crockett. Chris Crockett.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is a contract that you are aware of. There is a spring up in North Fork Park that we are looking at regarding some water rights. And in order to fully evaluate the issue, we need to look at some historical information. And with water rights, it's kind of like learning a second language. And so it's necessary for us, in this particular instance, to hire an expert to help us interpret some information. So this is a, an agreement with Barnett Intermountain Water Consulting. It allows for payment up to 10,000 to help us with this issue. And we're presenting it to you for consideration for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Questions for the, from the commission?
No, I, I'll just comment. Don Barnett's about the best in the business. We're lucky to have him here. I really appreciate you, Chris, so much for cleaning this up. This is a, this is some water negotiations we've had going on for decades and decades and decades. And now we're, we're more correctly understanding what is the county's, what's not. Just making sure everything's clean. And so future commissions won't have any struggles. You know, we mitigate that for them. So this is one of those things that it's a cleanup, really a cleanup thing that's taking place. And of course, it affects our North Fork Park. And this will, this will have a positive effect there eventually. And so we're in a good place. And when you're ready, I'll be happy to make a, a motion to the effect.
Commissioner Jenkins, comments? Okay, go ahead.
Motion to accept the contract between Weber County and Barnett Intermountain Water Consulting.
Second.
And we have a second before I place a motion. Yeah, Chris, I just appreciate that. This, I agree with you 100%. Water rights, even though I've been involved with this for the past 40-plus years, still a foreign language. And there's so many nuances to, to discover. And again, I agree with Commissioner Harvey. This is a cleanup issue. We just need to know exactly what our rights are as a county, our responsibilities as a county, so we can move forward and make good decisions with that particular water right. So, great effort. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Thank you. Approved, Chris. Let's go now to item four, Request for Approval of a Contract Buy-In Between Weber County and KNH Election Services for Election Ballot Printing, Processing, and Mailing Services. And it was under Ryan Kelly, but I understand Ricky Hatch will take that duty. Ricky?
Yeah. Last week, we mailed out, from elections, we mailed out about 100,000 mailers to citizens. And so, as you can imagine, the calls and the returned mail and questions are absolutely swamping our elections office. So Ryan has asked that I, I present this so that he can focus on, on that, that, that process. Commissioners, this is a contract with KNH Printing for, to provide the election services for the primary and the general elections for 2020. KNH was approved through a bidding process a few years back. And we will get through them, use them this year. We did not want to change a printer in the middle of a presidential election year because of the crucial nature of their services and that, and that partnership. KNH has served us very well for several years. And what, at the end of this year, we will go out to bid and issue an RFP for, to make sure that we go out and re, rebid this process, make sure we're getting a good pricing and have a good vendor. The contract is for up to 220,000 dollars, and it covers the printing and mailing of ballots, envelopes, inserts, as well as other elections-related mailings, such as the one we did last week. With the election print vendors, it's crucial that you get it exactly right. Elections are one of the few things that if you don't get it right, there's not a lot of recourse, because it's, it's pretty hard to rerun an election. So it's just crucial that your relationship with your printer is, is strong. KNH is one of the strongest election print service providers in the country. They provide election mailing for most of the counties in Washington and Oregon, including King County with over 3 million residents. And it's just a large, a large reputable company that just does a really good job for us. And so we're bringing this contract to you for review and recommend that you approve that.
Thank you. Questions for Ricky? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we approve the contract between Weber County and KNH Elections for this year's ballot printing.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to our last action item, Request for Approval of a $14,000 transaction, or donation, I should say, of Prop 1 Funds to Trails Foundation of Northern Utah for the Maintenance of Trails in North Fork Park. Mr. Wilkinson, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. The Trails Foundation of Northern Utah, formerly Weber Pathways, is requesting that donation that you mentioned, $14,000 from our Prop 1 Fund for maintenance of a couple of trails, bicentennial and long loop in North Fork Park. The project would consist of hiring two trail builders, who will use a mini excavator and hand tools to refurbish the trails, just improve them, bring them up to standard, and improve the drainage on them, so that they can be used earlier in the season. The donation comes from our Prop 1 Fund. And in this 2020 budget, Commissioners set aside $200,000 for maintenance of trails from that fund. So this would be the second request that Trails Foundation of Northern Utah has made this year. There would still be $162,000 available if this request is approved.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments? Questions? I just might mention, we actually had a meeting with Executive of the Trails Foundation, I believe it was last week. I don't think it's anybody's surprise, our trails are being used very actively during this pandemic we've seen. And it's imperative that we try to maintain trails so the public can go out and enjoy them. It's one of the few things that the public can, can enjoy. And without maintenance, without these being kept up, I think that we would be remiss as a county. And as I've been told, our trails compared to some other neighboring counties are very much top-notch. And I think we can thank the Trails Foundation for that. And anything we can do to maintain these trails with the investment that's been placed in them to this point in time is a, is a valid project. So. Questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the distribution of Prop 1 Funds in the amount of $14,000 to the Trail Foundation of Northern Utah for maintenance on North Fork Trails.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Let's go now to a public hearing. And I'd look for a motion to adjourn our meeting and reconvene as a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in a public hearing to consider a request to vacate a 10-foot public utility easement located at the north and west lot lines of Lot 16 of Cameron Village Cluster Subdivision. Mr. Steve Burton, welcome.
Hi, Commissioners. I'll try to make sure you can hear me through, through my mask here. We've received a request.
We can hear you. Just don't mumble. Don't mumble.
Gotcha. We've got a request to vacate a public utility easement on Lot 16 of Cameron Village Cluster Subdivision. That's there out west, just off of 2200 South. The, when this was platted a year ago, I guess prior to plating, the engineering company and surveying company put a 10-foot public utility easement on this lot. The setbacks in this zone are actually only eight feet. And so the, the builder would like to have that eight-foot setback. So they're requesting to vacate those utility easements. We've sent out notice per state code. None of the county reviewers have any issues with this. So we're recommending approval of this, of this ordinance.
Okay. So the 10-foot utility easement's no longer needed. It's taken care of another on, on site somewhere else?
Correct.
Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners?
None.
Okay. See no commission comments? Let's go to public comments. Anybody here from the public that would like to address this issue? This deals with public utility easement being vacated. Ralph?
I'd like to find out where this is located at.
Mr. Burton can tell you that.
Yes, I can. It's at 2307 South, 3925 West. And it's Lot 16 of the Cameron Village Cluster Subdivision. It's in the unincorporated part, out in the Taylor area.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Ralph?
It did.
Thank you. Any other comments, public comments regarding this particular issue? Seeing none. I will close public comments. We'll come back to the commission for action. I'm assuming you need approval on this? You're looking for approval today?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's go to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene as a public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay. Let's go to action on the public hearing, which is dealing with the 10-foot vacation of that easement. I'd look for a motion.
Commissioners, this would be Ordinance Six?
Ordinance Six.
Okay.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to vacate the easement, ordinance number six, has been presented at the public hearing.
Second. And we have a second.
Commissioner Harvey? Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
Chair for...
Aye. Looks like we have unanimous approval of that subdivision request to vacate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's now go to commissioner comments.
You know, I feel pretty exhausted with comments earlier today, I think we're in good shape.
Really?
I know, I know.
You had a lot of comments, we've had good public comments, that's great. Commissioner Jenkins?
I'm concerned if you're exhausted, it's only, uh...
Well, just with the comment part.
Ten to eleven in the morning.
Yeah, we could get through a few meetings a little quicker if my comments are exhausted more frequently.
Okay.
You know what, I'd do agree.
That's true. We're not, you know, we're not gonna bring that up for a vote or anything.
Right, great.
Anything else, Commissioner Jenkins?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion adjourned, Commissioner Harvey?
Second.
Undebatable, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.